Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's council meeting. My apologies for this be a late start as we obviously were here in closed session that required us to discuss. City of Anamosa City Council Agenda Regular Session Monday, September twenty second, twenty twenty five, six P M. Six oh seven P M. Anamosa Library Learning Center. One point zero roll call.
Here.
Wymer.
Here.
Dan Smith.
Here.
Tom Bird.
Here.
Four council members are present in chambers. No council members are removed. Two point zero pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. The United States of America. The Republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice as well.
We're proceeding. If you haven't already, please sign to your cell phones. Three point zero consent agenda review and approve. There are three items listed on the agenda. Also can make a motion that includes the word consent, which will bring all three up for discussion in a single vote. Or council can make a motion for any of the individual items. I'll read all three. Item A minutes from September eighth, twenty twenty five regular session. Item B current bills. Item C liquor license.
Move to approve consent.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Todd. Council discussion on any of the three items. Is there any public comment? Haley, would you conduct a roll vote, please?
Wymer.
Yes.
Dan Smith.
Yes.
Tom Bird.
Yes.
Pro.
Yes.
Consent motion. Uh. To approve carries. Four point zero public hearings. Four point one. Public hearing. Public hearing on the proposal to enter into the essential purpose loan agreement. And to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to not to exceed eight hundred and twenty thousand. Item A mayor opens the public hearing. The public hearing is now open proceedings for discussion. At this time, if you have any inquiries on this public hearing, you can come to the podium stage room. Item B mayor closes the public hearing. This public mayor, it, public hearing is now closed. Four point two resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty two. Resolution taking additional action on proposal entering to enter into loan agreement.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty two.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Brooke. Also discussion. Public comment? Haley, conduct a roll vote, please.
Dan Smith.
Yes.
Tom Bird.
Yes.
Pro.
Yes.
Wymer.
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty two carries. Four point three public hearing. Public hearing on the proposed plan specification proposed form contract and estimate. Estimated cost for water treatment plant aerator replacement project. Item A mayor opens public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Proceeds for discussion. Item B mayor closes the public hearing. This public hearing is now closed. Four point four resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty three resolution accepting bids and awarding the contract. For the water treatment plant aerator replacement project.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Rich. Also discussion. Public comment? Haley, would you conduct a roll vote, please?
Tom Bird.
Yes.
Pro.
Yes.
Wymer.
Yes.
Dan Smith.
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty three carries. Five point zero postpone items unfinished business. Five point one discussion and possible action. Public utilities lab cost benefit comparison. Steve Ignis.
Steve Ignis Utility Superintendent. Does anybody not have the? In front of them. I have copies.
I don't.
What are your questions?
Well, it looks to me like if we keep the lab in house, we're saving what twenty eight thousand five hundred and four dollars per year. So. That's a pretty good savings. Is that doing everything, Steve?
That'll be doing every, everything except for E. coli. We can't do E. coli.
Yep.
And fats, oils, and grease. That's only a once a month test. So we'll have. One little jar about this big that we'd have to ship once a month. And then E. coli, we just take to Macocata because there's a lab in Macocata that runs that one. That's also where our back tees go for the water side. So at least one of those trips when we do take E. coli is it, it's a double dip. So two for the. Same trip, so.
You did a good job. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, Ian, for providing that, those numbers.
Okay.
Do we need to do anything with this then, or?
Uh, this was just a follow up from the council. I don't necessarily need. Anything from the council as far as an action on it. If there's anything further and you would like to make a motion. To proceed with something different. We can do that. Unless we can call it.
Agree unless we're going to waiver from the current process.
And we weren't needed. Okay.
Six point zero council action items. Six point one project status update H R Green.
Good evening, everybody. Does everybody have an update on? It's part of the council packet. I could give a summary, or I'm happy to answer any questions you may have as well.
Can you just give us something, please?
Sure. Uh, Third Street sidewalk extension. My, uh, my project update stated August eighth, so it's about a month behind schedule too. So there's been a couple of changes since then. Uh, Third Street sidewalk, we were targeting a. I think it was early September, September second date. That's been pushed back by about a month. Uh, due to correspondence and coordination with D O T. So that otherwise we're looking to target a revised date of October seventh. Uh, with a letting date now in early February. So a slight, slight update from that Third Street sidewalk project from what's, uh, probably in your agenda packets. The sidewalk program, uh, about a month ago they were on site. They have now subsequently wrapped up. And we're working on dashboard, uh, in order to get some of that, uh, updated information available for a little bit easier review.
Do you know when that'll be completed?
Um, I don't. I can find out and follow up with the next update. Uh, the third project on the list, the water treatment plant, we had the public hearing, uh, just a couple of minutes ago. Um, that one has gone through bidding. We do have a D N R permit in hand and that one is ready to get going, uh, in order to go right into construction. The sanitary sewer project with Ford and Huber is actively, uh, in construction, and I believe there is a change order on tonight's agenda, uh, to keep, keep the couple scope changes moving on that one. If there's a desire to accommodate those. City G I S services, um, not no big updates. Uh, we had a, I think a battery went bad that we replaced. And, uh, H R Green's been working with, uh, Kaylee in City Hall to get some additional training. That has not been done yet, at least not to my knowledge, Kaylee. I'm going to skip over the military bridge for now. And then the sanitary sewer, um, we are, I believe there's been a little bit of an update with that one since, uh, August. Uh, plans are done. All easements have been obtained. We have a D N R construction permit in hand and that's ready to go immediately into bidding. Any other questions that I can answer at this point?
I don't.
No, I missed. I couldn't hear the first part.
Uh, would you? Is it to believe that project is ahead of schedule?
Yes. What my understanding is it's ahead of schedule. So it's looking to get wrapped up yet this calendar year with most of the surface restoration. Uh, it'd probably go into spring for like final seating and things like that, but, uh, they're making some good progress.
Also any questions, comments? Thanks for those updates.
Yep.
Six point two ordinance nine six six in ordinance deleting property from the tax increment finance district. For the Anamosa Highway one fifty one urban renewal area of the city of Anamosa, Iowa pursuant to section. Four oh three point one nine of the, of the code of Iowa.
Uh, so this ordinance, uh, this is provided by Dorsey and Whitney. Um. They are recommending waiver of the subsequent readings. Just so the council is aware, I do need to double check on this. Um, the document provided stated that it needs the five of six council members to approve this. Um, I guess I would recommend we proceed as planned, uh, if the council decides to approve this tonight, and I'll verify that if that's the case or not. Um, in talking with John Danos over at Dorsey, um, we did talk about, uh, the council's tendency, uh, not to waive subsequent readings, but because this is, uh, generally not considered a controversial ordinance, merely. Um, changing the, uh, or deleting the tax increment financing district, uh, they have recommended that we waive the subsequent readings.
So we would need a motion to. Uh, remove. The TIF. And then a second motion. If council's goal chooses to waive.
That's right. And motion to, motion to approve the resolution and then a second, uh, to waive the subsequent. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Rich, second by Dan. Also discussion. Public comment? Haley, would you conduct a roll vote?
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion. To approve carries. I guess so. That motion was not the resolution.
That motion was the resolution.
So. Six, two and six, three are combined.
Um, no, they are separate.
Okay. Right. Is there a motion now to waive the subsequent readings?
I'll make the motion to waive the subsequent readings.
I'll second.
Motion by Todd, second by Dan. Also discussion. Public comment? This might be considered a, a very. Low. Issue. Uh. I think I'm just not in favor of waiving these readings. Haley, whoops.
I, I, I personally, I guess, would like to see us. Before we waive. I have no problem doing one reading. But I guess I'd like to see us have at least maybe one more council member present. Before we waive. The second.
So we can do that. Um, it's possible then, uh, we will miss the requirements to provide this TIF. We're within that deadline, which is the reason why they recommended the waiver.
So there's, there's a deadline on this issue.
Yes. Yeah. It, we're, we're trying to get it on to the, um, next, uh, cycle of TIF. Um, we have to have it in by. November, I think the beginning of November approved and finalized, um, but it has to go through the, uh, remainder of the public. Hearing process and all the meetings that go along with it.
So if we waited until the first meeting in October. We potentially still miss. If we. Do the first meeting in October and waive the second or do the second and third. At that point in time, we'd still run the risk of missing a deadline.
I need to double check. They, they advised that we had very little wiggle room, um, but some.
Well, I mean, I know if we probably did one the next meeting and then one final, we would run the risk.
Sure. We, yes, we've got, um, uh, along with all the TIF, uh, stuff, we have to go through public hearings and notifications to the county and the school. Um, I don't recall the dates on those, but they have to happen at specific times, uh, to approve this. Um, so again, um. I, I can double check with them. Um. This is deleting a TIF, uh, district, um. Not generally considered a. Crucial. Um, public area. But. Uh, again, we may have to wait anyways because of that five of six council meetings that's on there. Uh, five of six council members, I'm sorry.
So our vote tonight might actually be a.
It might be a wash anyway.
Okay.
Uh.
I'm going to move forward because there is a motion on the floor unless Todd is going to rescind it.
I'm happy to. With all my emotion at this time to allow for. Conversation with, uh. Appropriate counsel on that.
I, I'd guess if need be. And it is time crucial and we have to do it. We could potentially hold a special meeting for that if we can make sure we got at least five members.
I will advise.
Or are you with that? Are you rescinding your?
Yes. I would be rescinding.
Would be no action on. Recommendation, uh, the motion to waive. Six point three resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty four resolution deleting property. From the Anamosa Highway one fifty one urban renewal area.
Uh, so this will go hand in hand. This is the resolution, uh, to accomplish the same as the ordinance, um. And I guess I'll have to check. They did not advise if one is approved, if the other has to be approved. Or not.
Well, I'll make a motion on this one also because we already did approve the first reading on the other one, so. I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second. Motion by Rich, second by Todd. Also discussion. Public comment? Bailey?
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Pro?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty four carries. Resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty five resolution setting date for public hearing on designation of the expanded Anamosa Highway one fifty one. Urban renewal area and on urban renewal plan amendment.
Uh, so this will be the next step in the process, but it is setting the public hearing for October twenty seventh. Um. I'm sure depending on when and if we're able to get the other one approved, um. It, it could potentially run into this, um. At this point, I guess I would recommend approving this, um, on the assumption that we'll move forward with the other.
I'll make a motion, um. For resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty five then.
Second.
Be, before that. I see the, are we doing this at the Lark? Library Learning Center? Because I see that's blank.
Yes, um, this.
At six P M?
Yep, that's correct. It's for the regular council meeting on that date and time.
Okay.
Motion by Rich, second by Brooke. Also discussion. Public comment? Bailey?
Pro.
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Motion to resolution twenty twenty five carries. Item six point five resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty six resolution setting the date for a public hearing on proposal to enter into general. Obligation loan agreements and to borrow money thereunder.
Um, this one is setting the public hearing for the G O bond for the libraries, uh, geothermal units.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh. Approve the. Date, time for the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Rich, second by Dan. Also discussion. Public comment? Bailey?
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Pro?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty six carries. Resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty seven to set the wage for the position of temporary full-time public utilities operator for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Those are approves.
I'll second.
Second by Dan. Also discussion.
Is this a new position?
Uh, no, this was from, uh, the, the temporary position was, um, filled and then that individual moved to the permanent position and it opened up the temporary again. Is this the? In line is the hourly wage in line with what? We would otherwise be paying. Yes. Yep. That has not changed. Thank you.
Other questions? Public comment? Bailey?
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Pro?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty eight, excuse me, sixty seven areas. Six point seven resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty eight to set the wage. For the position of full-time recreation coordinator for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
I'll make the motion approved. Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Rich. Also discussion. Public comment? Bailey?
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Pro?
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty eight carries. Six point eight review and approve. Setting the date and time of Anamosa trick or treat for October thirty first. Five to eight P M.
I'll move.
Go ahead.
I'll move to approve setting the date and time of the Anamosa trick or treat for October thirty first. From five P M to eight P M.
Second.
Motion by Todd, second by Rich. Council discussion. Public comment? Bailey?
Pro?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Motion to approve Anamosa trick or treat. Date and time carries. Six point nine review and approve professional services agreement amendment for increase of twenty five thousand five hundred dollars for the water treatment plant aerator replacement project.
Is this just to oversee the project, Josh?
Our initial contractors for design and bidding phase. So this is an amendment to additional construction phase. It's mostly going to be admin, but there will be some site visits, uh, some punchless inspections and some other onsite activities as well.
Thank you. I'll move to approve.
Second. Motion by Rich, second by Todd. Council discussion. Public comment? Bailey, please.
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Pro?
Yes.
Motion to approve, uh, amendment carries. Six point ten review and approve temporary waiver of Anamosa personnel policy nine point zero six. For the Anamosa firefighters fall fundraiser on September twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
Uh, we included the flyers as well as the memos I've done in previous years. Um, they are having their annual stake, uh, benefit. And we just need to have this waived, um. If they are to, uh, assist with any of the services that evening. Do we have all the? Appropriate licenses and? Uh, so per the attorney, um, I believe the answer is yes, but that is entirely the responsibility of the person coming in. So they're responsible for bringing those, um. Proper licenses with them and doing the serving and whatnot.
I'll make a motion to waive the personnel policy nine point zero six for the Anamosa firefighters.
I'll second. Motion by Rich, second by Dan. Also discussion. Public comment? Bailey?
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Pro?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Motion to temporary waive Anamosa's personnel policy carries. Six points eleven review and approve consent agenda pay requests totaling three hundred thirty six thousand three hundred and four dollars seventy cents. There are seven agenda items. I will read all seven off. Also can make a motion that includes the word consent, which will bring all seven up for discussion in a single vote. Or council can make a motion on any of the items. Item A from Chick-fil-A excavating change order of forty thousand four hundred fifty three dollars eighty cents for the Ford and Huber sanitary sewer project. Item B from E C cog in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars for the downtown revitalization project. Item C from E C cog in the amount of eighteen hundred dollars for the water wastewater treatment plant flow E Q basin project. Item D from H R Green in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for the water treatment plant aerator project. Item E from H R Green in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and three dollars forty cents. For the Ford and Huber sanitary sewer project. Item F from H R Green in the amount of three thousand six hundred dollars for the downtown facade revitalization project. Item G from W R H Inc. in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand two hundred and ninety seven dollars fifty cents. For the wastewater treatment plant flow E Q basin project.
Move to approve consent.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Brooke. Also discussion on the seven items. Any public comment? Bailey?
Tom Bird?
Yes.
Pro?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Motion to approve consent carries. Seven point zero city administrators report.
I don't have anything this evening.
Eight point zero mayor council reports, eight point one mayor's report. I also don't have anything. Eight point two council reports.
Um. As part of the tourism, um, board. Just want to let everybody know that, uh, if you haven't seen it, that Bob Hatcher, who is the longtime director passed away recently and. Um. He did a, a very good job for a long time and. Just want to recognize him.
Just to point that out, Rich. Anything else? Nine point zero public comment for items not on the agenda. Ten point zero adjournment. The seedings meeting was adjourned. Ten point zero adjournment. The seedings meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for taking time to the hall.